The City of Oconomowoc Common Council Meeting for Tuesday, August 19th, 2025. Has appropriate meeting notification been made?
It has, Your Honor.
Mr. Duffy, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome, everyone. Would you please call roll?
Alderman Youngworth.
Here.
Alderman Rosick.
Rosen?
Rosick.
Oh, Rosick, here.
Sorry. I'm sorry. Alderman Altman Clothe.
Here.
Alderman Ellis.
Here.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Here.
Alderman Mulder.
Here.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Here.
Alderman McConnell.
Here.
All right, we have three public hearings on the agenda. The last one, item 4C, has been canceled. So we just have two public hearings today. So I'll read the public hearing and we'll go jump right into it. Public, first public hearing is for a text amendment on accessory structures. The purpose is to hear public comments to amend section 17.1103, accessories, use and structures in the city zoning code. The request would add three accessory structures requiring a permit and includes a table for structure and type and whether it is required for a permit. The text amendment also amends section 17.9036A, accessory building, to include structure types and definitions. These amendments are proposed to help clarify the regulation of the structures and residential districts. Mr. Gallo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Tonight, we have these two public hearings. I'm going to have Daisy Quinlan present these to you. She's been the summer intern in the planning department. This was one of her many tasks, was to do these two zoning code text amendments. So with that, I'll turn it over to Daisy. She can run through. I also want to warn you, earlier this evening, when we were doing our practice run, the projector was kind of getting a little odd. It was overheating, maybe, and it was going out. So if it does go out, your screens still work. And I do have printed copies, which I usually don't do, available for anyone in the audience. We're going to try to go with it. Usually, it took about four or five minutes into it, it started flashing and going out. So we'll try our best.
So you have four minutes to present.
All right. Both items. Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. This first item I'll be presenting is accessory structures zoning amendment. So some background, our current ordinance is missing some regulations, which is leading to a high volume of calls and emails from the public about accessory structures. This amendment will help answer questions by providing clarity in the code and consistency within the planning department. So on the left, here is our current zoning ordinance, and nowhere under accessory uses and structures does it mention any regulations or need of a permit for the following that are considered accessory structures. So carports, gazebos, greenhouses, patio pergola and trellis. Each of these have been brought to the planning department's attention multiple times, which is why we are specifically focusing on them. So we did some research on other communities that are similar to Oconomowoc in size and close to the area. In New Berlin, we found a lot of information that we're missing, but they have in their current zoning ordinance. Another example is the city of Brookfield. They had detailed information located under their building code. So as you can see, gazebos, greenhouses and pergolas were notable in theirs. So these are all the other communities we looked at. The table shows that there's at least one mention of each structure, whether it was like regulations, definitions, permit information, found in their municipal code of each of the cities. We talked to the building inspector in June. He had suggested a structure should require a permit if it has a roof or attached to a house. He also recommended clearly stating definitions of each structure. This table below shows the differences between each of them, and based on other communities and his suggestions, we should require a permit and regulations for carports, gazebos and greenhouses. So this proposed ordinance includes all the information we wanted to add to the ordinance from everything we compiled. This section is getting added to the regulations of the ordinance under accessory structures and uses. It explains how carports, gazebos and greenhouses require a building permit. And then also over here, it explains that any structure with a closed roof attached to a primary dwelling unit requires a building permit, and structures 50 square feet or less do not require a building permit. And then this section is going to be added to the definitions under accessory building with specific definitions for each type. During our last planning commission meeting on August 6th, there's a lot, so most permits are dependent on roofs. So we decided to add a definition to help clarify that, which a commissioner had proposed at the August 6th meeting. And then for the public, I designed a handout to make it easier to find the information. The handout correlates to our current handout, but it includes definitions, permit information, photos for reference of each structure and how to apply for a building permit. So provided is staff's recommendation to the council from August 6th, 2025, and that is all I have for you today.
Great, thank you very much. What we're going to do is open up this public hearing if anyone in the audience would like to make a comment, and then we'll move on to our second public hearing and bring you back.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any, I don't have any blue cards. Does anybody want to make any comments with regard to this? Seeing none from the audience, we're going to move on to our second public hearing. Public hearing is another text amendment for swimming pools, hot tubs and spas. The purpose is to hear public comments to amend section 17.1118, additional structures specific accessory units and structures in the city zoning code. The request would add E, the aquatic facilities requiring a permit to include a table for structures type, for structure type, and whether it requires a building permit with additional direction for hot tubs and spas. The text amendment also amends 17.9036, accessory uses and structures to add hot tub, spa with each definition. These amendments are proposed to help clarify regulations of the structures in residential districts. We're ready for you.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and council members. This item is about swimming pools, spas and hot tubs zoning text amendment. So like the first ordinance I had presented, this amendment will answer questions for the public and clarify, or provide clarity so everybody understands what is going on. So in the ordinance, the zoning ordinance, we are currently missing information under swimming pool standards on hot tubs and spas. Spas are a newer thing that can be mistaken for swimming pools, and hot tubs, we just don't have any information about. Let's see, so we did research other communities similar in size, like the last one. The city of Muskego does a great job at explaining types of swimming pool, or types of pools requiring a permit. So as you can see, there's spas, hot tubs and in-ground pools. For another example is the city of Peewaiki. They explain regulations and definitions for each structure, plus they provide a handout for easy public access that we found on their city website. So the communities we looked at were almost all the same as the other ordinance, but we found a few other successful ones that we wanted to add. As you can see, there was information on hot tubs and spas, whether it was setbacks, general regulations, permit information found in their municipal code, except for Brookfield, as you can see. So since there's no dictionary definition for this kind of spa, we found companies selling spas that provide a definition, which is something we want to add into our ordinance. You can see below, it explains all of the important aspects of a spa and characteristics. This is what their product looks like. The average size is about eight by 15 feet. That's about 120 square feet. This is almost the size of like a small pool, as you can see, which is a little difficult to place in an ordinance. We also talked to the building inspector. He had suggested no permits are required for hot tubs or spas. He also mentioned we should clearly state definitions for each structure, like the last ordinance. So this is our ordinance, proposed ordinance. We compiled all the information to create it. This section is getting added on to swimming pool standards, which also, which shows aquatic facilities requiring a building permit, and anything over 144 square feet is considered a swimming pool, which means it would require a building permit. So here, we will be adding like the hot tub definition to the definition section of our ordinance, and here we will be adding spas. And as you can see, it explains down below, includes a hardcover that must hold up to 200 pounds and a maximum size of 144 square feet, which is also in the hot tub definition. This is the handout for swimming pools that I put together. It will be provided for the public on the website. It includes all information found in the ordinance, talking about the swimming pool standards, and I added definitions and what requires a permit, some helpful information of differences of spas and swimming pools, some photos for reference and how to apply for a building permit. This is our recommendation, staff's recommendation to the council for, from August 6th, 2025, and that is all I have.
Thank you very much. You may have a seat.
Thank you.
I'd like to entertain any comments from the public for this public hearing? Do we have any comments from the public? Seeing no comments from the public, I'm closing both public hearings on the accessory structures and the swimming pool, hot tubs and spas, and we'll move on to our next item on the agenda. I'd like to entertain a motion for the approval of minutes for August 5th, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Closed, and motion carries. Do we have anyone in the audience that would like to make a comment or suggestion from citizens? This is a time you can share anything that you would like with the council and any happenings here in the city of Oconomowoc. Seeing no comments and no blue cards, moving forward, we'll move on to our consent agenda items. I'd like to entertain a motion for consent agenda items 7A through 7D.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Closed? None opposed. Moving on to our committee reports, we're going to start with finance. Consider Act on Resolution 25-R3304, awarding property assessment services 2026 to 2028. Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In your packet and what was presented to and recommended by the finance committee preceding this meeting, our current assessors, contract for assessor services ends with the 2025 valuation year. City staff prepared and put out a request for proposals, from which we received a proposal from Associated Appraisal Consultants. Their proposal was recommended for acceptance and approval by the common council. I'm happy to take any questions if you'd, if you'd like any further details or conversation.
So prior to this meeting, the finance committee discussed this in more detail, and these are the folks that assess the property taxes on properties within the city of Oconomowoc. They had recommended moving this forward. I'd like to open up for any discussions or comments from council members at this time. Alderman Rosick, and we also have the representative here. If you'd like to ask him to come up, you're welcome to do so.
Thank you, yes. We have Dean Peters here with us. Dean, if you would.
What was his name again?
Dean Peters.
Dean?
Dean Peters, I'm the Vice President of Operations at Associated Appraisal.
Hey, Dean. It was, it was a question randomly. I have a couple, but while you're up there, other communities you work for, can you tell us what other communities are out there that you do work for right now?
Well, sure. We, in Waukesha County, Vilja Peewaiki, Big Bend, I'm kind of going off the top of my head here.
That's okay. It's a kind of surprise questions, I know.
Well, there are several. I think at least eight or nine in, between Milwaukee County and Waukesha County, St. Francis and Waukesha County, West Milwaukee, in Milwaukee County, West Milwaukee. Let me think, Vilja McWanago.
That's fine. That's good enough. I mean, I'm just curious that you've done other stuff in, in our general area. And those other communities that you do valuations and assessments for, do you do full market evaluations like we currently do?
We, yes, we offer different types of services. Some municipalities prefer to have revaluations.
Can you speak into the microphone a little more, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Some municipalities prefer to have revaluations staggered out between every five to seven years, and others prefer to keep the assessments more current. So there are many communities that we work with that do reassess every single year, and others are on an every other year plan, and others are on a, you know, more of a five-year cycle, something like that.
That's all I had, that's all I had for you, Dean.
Alderman Shellpepper?
What kind of experience do you guys have with condos, condos on lakefront property? I've heard anecdotally that our prior appraisal company was not doing so great with those types of buildings, and even admitted that they had little experience with it.
Well, I would say that we are very experienced with waterfront valuation. One example I can give you is that we do the majority of the valuation work on Geneva Lake, which is the town of Lynn, which has the north and south shores with all the estates. We do the city of Lake Geneva, which has the towers, high-rise condos. Other areas that we do waterfront, we do Green Lake, we do city of Sturgeon Bay and a lot of the shoreline in Door County. So we are very experienced with lakefront valuation and condominium valuation.
Great question. Other comments for the applicant?
Yeah, just a comment for mostly public record. We did talk about in committee, kind of the pros and cons of measuring or assessing values annually and or biannular, even as you mentioned, every five to seven years. And I think it's an interesting conversation for the entire city to understand. And so the, the pro of doing it every single year is we're seeing potentially smaller incremental values, if that's how it was explained correctly, versus really large unexpected jumps potentially every five to seven years. So I've heard about it. I was kind of shocked myself that we were, my house was getting evaluated every year, but it was a very interesting conversation to have.
Do you want to put that into a question? I know you brought that up in council. Do you have a question for Dean on that?
I was mostly just kind of recapping the conversation.
Perfect, okay. I just, I wanted to make sure I understood. Good. Alderman Spiegelberg?
I don't have a question for Dean, but in the committee meeting, we talked about some of the municipalities that he works with, and there were quite a few that had quite a bit of longevity with you, which is a good sign. And then the, there was also a question in our committee meeting about would we want to extend services with who we have now, because we can extend those another two years, and it would be a lot less than what we'd be paying them. But we talked through, you know, some of the issues that we had with our prior assessor and felt that, you know, it's a good thing for us to move forward and make a fresh start with you guys, so. And thank you for being here, Dean.
Thank you. Yeah, we pride ourselves on the partnerships that we create with the municipalities that we serve, and we are proud of the quality of the valuation work that we do in our, in our public relations and our communications and things like that. We are definitely, we appreciate this opportunity. You have a beautiful city here, so we're looking forward to working with you.
Thank you. Alderman Rosick?
I don't have no more questions for you, Dean.
You want to sit down, Dean? You can.
I'm fine.
Thank you.
Yeah, Karen, to that point, we did have previous issues with our former assessor. So Dean, you'll be okay as long as you don't assess a personal residential house at $10 million? And you communicate with, with our constituents? The additional cost is, is nominal compared to the problems we experienced. So to that end, I have a few questions. One, who all sat on the RFP committee to review this?
I could take that. The, both myself, the city clerk, the accounting manager, Hannah Brash, as well as our city administrator, so four staff members.
And this may be questions for Mark. Did the previous assessor who goofed up and owed us money finish paying us back?
So that was going to be spread over the timeframe of their contract, so if we've made our last payment to them, then yes.
Okay, then, good. I think this, I think this is a good move. I appreciate us getting out there. I know it's a little scary when we only have one actual RFP to review response, but it, they've, unless they do what the last assessor did, well, it'll be wildly successful comparatively speaking, so.
And I would just add that we did check with a number of other communities and had positive feedback, as well as a, a current renewal with the city Milton currently.
I'm aware. Thank you, Steve. Appreciate that.
I'd like to entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any further questions or comments? Call roll.
Alderman Youngworth.
Aye.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Altman Clothe.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman McConnell.
Aye.
Welcome to Oconomowoc. Next item, Consider Act Resolution 25-R3305, disallowing claim for M. Wrangle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city received a claim for damage to a resident vehicle driving into the construction site for the, the road reconstruction on Fowler Street. We did turn that claim over to our insurance company. The insurance company investigated and recommended that the city disallow the claim. Is the, any, any damage for a vehicle traveling through that site would be the responsibility of the contractor. So we did hear this at the finance committee, and the finance committee did recommend to approve the resolution to disallow the claim.
I'd like to entertain a motion, please.
Or, yeah, I'll make the motion, but, or the responsibility of the person driving through the construction site. They're much more contributorially negligent.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further questions or comments? Call roll, please.
Alderman Youngworth.
Aye.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Altman Clothe.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman McConnell.
Aye.
Under a public service area, let's consider Act on Resolution 25-R3306 for additional boat launch engineering costs. Mr. Betcher?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's see if this is going to work. Fingers crossed. Maybe.
And the flashing green.
It looks like we need to, the capital budget.
Ivan to the rescue.
What would we do without Ivan? So I thought I'd share, I know we have a couple new council members, but also just to kind of go back over history, it's kind of amazing, a year ago, we were talking about how do we get all these boats off of the, off of the lake? And as you can see, this is what the boat launch used to look like. And so last year at this time, we were looking at the construction timeline, you know, we did start in September 3rd with the dredging, you know, we did get all the boats off on October 1st. So that was, that was actually one thing that I thought would be a lot harder than it was, and we had a lot of cooperation, so we were able to do that. And then the construction season, you know, was originally supposed to end in mid-December, and we actually went through pretty much the whole winter. So we had a little lull in late February, but then we were right back up to it in March, so. So a lot of hard work by our contractors, our engineers, city staff, everyone here, and we were able to open that launch on May 3rd. So sorry, it's two days late, but you know, I consider that a huge win, so. So this is what our boat launch would look like in the past with high water, and this is not even the same high water that we have now. And if you look now, this is some photos of what it looks like recently with all the water that we've gotten. So as you can see, this has been a very successful project. As you can see, there's not much standing water. We do have the trench train traps that let a little bit in, but for the most part, all of this is, you know, pretty much water-free. If we were going to be in the old launch, you'd be, you know, up to your knees in water, so. Also wanted to mention the fact that MSA or project engineer, they did submit this for an award, and we did win the 2025 SOBA Outstanding Project Award, so we will be receiving this in August, at the end of this month. So again, just nice to know that this has been recognized and we are now an award-winning boat launch, so.
Did they give us cash for that award?
No, no.
I was just asking the same thing.
$1,000.
$275,000, yeah.
Nice.
Unfortunately, no, no. I think we're going to get like a little plaque or something, so.
That's good.
So with that, you know, this is what it looks like now, so. Lot of hard work, lot of effort, and it really turned out really nice. I think it's a great facility. So with that, I'll go on to the first resolution, which is consideration an Act on Resolution 25-R3306 for additional boat launch engineering service fees, looking at additional $16,000. This is for assistance with closing out some of the project items, so things like closing out the grant, closing out the, the project, final project site reviews, help us with remaining punch list items, and then coordinate with city for final projection costs. So this is an additional $16,000 I'm asking for, and so staff has recommended we motion to approve Resolution 25-R3306.
And just to remind council and, and committee, the item that you're considering maybe waiting on is the next item, not this first item.
Correct.
So I'd like to ask any questions for Mr. Betcher?
I do have one question. I know $16,000 is a whole ton of money, but these services that are described here seem to be necessary to close out a big project like this, so why weren't they included originally?
Because at the end of the day, when you look at everything that was involved, it depends on how big of the punch list is and things like that, so they usually don't include this in because they want to see what's remaining, so they don't want to overcharge us.
Yeah, that makes sense. Thank you.
I'd like to entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any further questions or comments? Call roll, please.
Alderman Youngworth.
Aye.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Altman Clothe.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman McConnell.
Aye.
Our next item is Consider Act on Resolution 25-R3307 for the final boat launch construction cost. Without objections, I would recommend that we move this to two weeks from now, when we have all of the final costs for the boat, boat launch construction. This was also in committee meeting. It was not voted on because he wanted to make sure we could do the final thing in one vote. So without objection, I would suggest we do not move forward on this item, and we bring that back in two weeks.
I agree.
Do I have any objection? Without hearing objection, we're going to move forward on to utility items, Consider Act on Resolution 25-R3303 for sanitary sewer service area study. And I won't call you Mr. Freebear, so Tim.
Thank you, thank you. I'll pull this up right away, there for future reference. The last time this topic was in front of council was in June of this year, in the, the topic of sanitary service areas and future development of those. In June, we brought forward a final report to council that, that effort began in 2024, looking at some parcels south and west of the city center. At that time, with that, we provided some alternatives based on when certain parcels were developed, based on those timelines and the different costs associated with each one of those. So that's kind of the, the deliverables with that study. During that conversation, we also noted several times that we were continuing to get inquiries on other parcels within the city, and those inquiries continue to this day. I also think it's important to mention that it is the city's preference to develop on sanitary municipal services within the city limits. That is our preference. But in order to reach out and service some of these areas, we need to
But in order to reach out and service some of these areas, we need to better understand the feasibility and the economics of doing that. And so we worked to develop a scope to, for some additional projects. And in turn, we received a proposal from Rooker Milky for those additional study areas. And I'll see if I can kind of zoom in a little bit here on some of these. Specifically, Area 1 is north and west of the city's center, north and west of Allen Road, and on the west and east side of Rutterland Road. That total acreage is about 760 acres out there. And Area 2 is south of the city, south of Valley Road and east of North Golden Lake Road. That's the other area that totals roughly about 400 acres. So those are specific areas that we're targeting with this study. We are looking to, as we did with the previous study, to do this in a hybrid approach, meaning we will utilize some city staff along with engineering services. We'd be asking city planning staff to assist in some of the logical layout and some densities in these areas. And the engineers would utilize some of that information. They would provide us with hydraulic information based on the ultimate build-out and some of those densities. They would also provide us with some sizing of force mains, gravity mains, lift station placements, and also the routing of those lines. Those are some of the future deliverables. So I think it's important to note there will be some limitations, things we're not doing with the study. We're not going to venture into Jefferson County with this study, and we won't be exploring some of the hydraulic limitations downstream of Area 1. We know we'd need a lift station out there, and an existing force main would be coming down Allen Road, so it would tie into the city right about where that dot is now. So we're not going to be, that'd be a separate effort, not included with the study, just to be clear. The proposal from Rooker Milky is for the amount of $40,000. We would also be looking for a 10% contingency for a total project cost of $44,000.
Questions or comments from Mr. Rio? Alderman Rosak.
Just a couple of quick ones, Tim. With the Area 2 being so close to where we could move into logically Jefferson County past Morgan Road, why not do more study into that area? Are you not allowed to study across county lines?
It's a different animal when we go across county lines. The approval process is much different than we would working within Wachshut County.
Gotcha.
And I think maybe in the future, that's something. We're logically trying to identify is within the city limits right now, and there could be future studies that would involve new parcels, new areas certainly, so.
The other question I would have, once we do the study, we've got the sunk cost of 40K in this. If Area 2, let's say for instance, Area 2 develops, can we build that back to future developers as some portion? Is there a way to do that?
I think that would be up to how we, the language we developed in the development agreement.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's something important to consider. If we're doing these studies in advance of development, and five years from now, someone buys that 400 acres and decides to develop it, I think it's something we should be making a mental note of, or whoever's on council at that point.
Yep, we've actually kind of anecdotally talked about that.
Oh, wow, okay.
Some of those, you know, is that feasible? What would that look like? But I think it's important to note, and we should certainly consider that.
Get, yeah, so a developer comes in, they want to develop it, they want to start putting in, you know, sewer. We need to talk about what that cost and our initial efforts to get them to get a spot.
Correct, I agree.
Awesome, thank you. I'm glad you're thinking about it, Tim. Thank you.
Tim, one question. So if we have a 10% contingency, what would be a contingency in this type of project? Because when I look at something like this, if you're hiring a contractor to do something like this, they know the terrain, they have all the information, why can't we put a not to exceed $40,000?
We could do that too. There might be, as an example, there might be something that comes along that we would like them to do a deeper dive, you know, and that would allow us to continue that effort, do that deeper dive to get us that little bit more information.
So if they have to do a deeper dive, if they don't do a deeper dive on something, would we still get the information we need out of the study? I'm just trying to be frugal. I don't know why.
Yes, we would, and I don't know. I don't really have a good, so I don't know what that deeper dive. As an example, let's say the project was positive, right, and the cost came in low, and we wanted to, in this example, say, hey, we have some additional monies. I'd like to do a hydraulic study downstream of that because we're going to need it anyway. It'd be nice to be able to do that. Especially not to exceed, it's going to be time and materials. So there's some flexibility with that, I think. So that's the rationale for it.
Nope, that makes sense. I just couldn't figure out why. Other questions or comments?
I think the only comment, excuse me, and I understand I'm being a little bit redundant, but not only do I think this is important for future development, understanding the costs and all that, but I'm glad we're using city resources to help offset, drive down those costs, so that was, that was good to hear.
Getting crews to Jason, they've done an excellent job in the past on that.
Like to entertain a motion, please.
So moved, Altman Clof.
Second.
Any further questions or comments? Call roll, please.
Alderman Youngworth.
Aye.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Altman Clof.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman McConnell.
Aye.
Onto our next two items, which were the two plan commission items that were in the public hearings earlier this evening. Council, please note that these are ordinance changes. These are the first readings. You have at any point in time in a motion to waive the first reading, waive the second reading, excuse me if you so choose. Mr. Gallo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did hold two public hearings this evening. No one spoke, but they, it was presented to you from Daisy Quinlan here. You know, again, the purpose of these two text amendments may seem kind of minor, but I do receive a lot of phone calls when I'm wearing my zoning administrator hat. It talks about, you know, is a permit required for a gazebo or a greenhouse or, you know, a spa? And we don't have definitions for these, and people like to see it in writing. Where does it say that? You know, what is the definition? I went out in Silver Lake Trails, a lady's putting in a spa, and I really didn't know an answer, you know? It was one of these big Michael Phelps swim spas, and I'm like, boy, it kind of looks like a pool. It's huge, you know? So I didn't know what to say. So when I was looking for tasks for the summer intern, I really thought this was a high priority because there's, I get like probably one call a month, and I can't really answer it. And our code, you know, we really trimmed back the zoning ordinance, but we removed a lot of stuff, and I needed, I think this brings some clarity to it. So we're here to answer any questions. Daisy did a lot of the heavy lifting on this project, researching other communities and putting together the handouts.
I'll read the agenda item. Consider Act on Ordinance 25-01105 to create Section 17.1103 accessory building permits and amend 17.036 definitions relating to accessory structures within the city zoning ordinance. This is the first reading. Do we have any questions or comments for Mr. Gallo? Mr. Rosak?
Sure, thanks, Mayor. For some of these things like greenhouse, gazebo, patios, are there still, maybe the packet didn't have all this, but do they still have setback requirements as well for these things? So the setbacks for housing, roofline, all that will still apply because it's not in the packet, the whole ordinance? And I guess maybe I didn't have a chance to look at that entire section talking about the setbacks. But, so if you wanted to put a greenhouse next to your backyard, it still would have to comply with setbacks for your neighbor's side yard or backyard setbacks?
Right, we have, under the Performance Standards section in the zoning, we have setbacks for the principal building as well as accessory buildings. We're putting this under 17.110 accessory structures, and it kind of, under the umbrella of all accessory structures, you know, we have a minimum of a five-foot rear yard setback, three-foot side yard. It must be in the rear yard or the side yard only.
And what would the cost for the ones that now require the carport, gazebo, greenhouse that require a permit? What are the permit costs for those?
The accessory building is a sliding scale. I think it's, you know.
Based on square footage?
Fifty per 150 square foot. It's like one amount, and then it goes up, and then anything over 600 square feet is based on square footage. So there's, there's a couple of things.
Okay.
Other questions or comments?
I've got one. It's under the Part 2 General Standards for All Accessory Uses and Structures, specifically Item F. It says there's a limit to two accessory buildings. Is that just the buildings, or is that two accessory structures? Because if you go down, we define an accessory structure as like a play structure, a playhouse, something like that, and if we're limiting it to two, I can see where that could come into some problems, or is it just the buildings that we're limiting to two?
I don't have that section in front of me, but that's two accessory buildings.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we, we're not going to go out and count play structures or dog houses or something like that, so.
Cool.
Other questions or comments?
I guess just a question, so, and I think I heard it in detail, but we're voting this, we're talking about this, excuse me, because there's calls coming in asking questions, something that's not necessarily because there's an issue with, I mean, it's because the calls are coming in, there isn't clarity, right? That's, that's why we're, okay.
Yes, it's just to provide clarity and consistency. There are a lot of calls that come in about it, like I remember.
Once a month I heard about?
Yeah, yeah, like even like last week, I remember Jason picking up and asking, someone was asking a question. But I think it'll also like help because Christie also handles like zoning questions. So if it's in the book, then it'll be easier for both of them to be relaying the right information. And the building inspector, yeah.
Okay.
I have, McConnell actually brought up a really good question, and maybe I'm not clear on this from that answer. You have the accessory buildings. All these things are considered accessory buildings now under our ordinance if we pass this. And is there a limit of two? So you couldn't have a gazebo and a patio and a trellis? You could only have two of the six?
I'm confused.
Or is it just what requires a permit?
Or is it just the permit? Yeah, that's where I'm confused there. So there seems, we need to clarify that.
Yeah, we can take a look at that. It's a good point. I didn't realize all these were, you know.
Defined as accessory buildings, right? So like right now, I already have a patio. I mean, my HOA doesn't allow me to put any of this stuff in. But, you know, if it did, I already have a patio, so if I added a carport and then a pergola, I'd be technically outside of the ambit of this statute, this section.
Well, that section for the two buildings, you know, when we talk about the size of an accessory building, like we're talking a detached garage, it says you're allowed, and again, there's a sliding scale, but let's say you're allowed up to 1,000 square feet. That's for the larger lots of the city. We don't want those to be in four different buildings in your backyard. We're hoping no more than two, a detached garage and then a shed. That's really the intent. So we can, we can look at that as well, but these, we could add a sentence in there if you would like to add that to a motion that says the number of accessory buildings is not applicable to the six items, you know, mentioned below.
Wow, yeah. I don't, well, I don't necessarily agree with that because I don't, I don't necessarily want someone putting a gazebo, greenhouse, a patio, pergola, trellis, and carport in their backyard either. So I guess we, do we, what do we do? I guess maybe my thought is, you know, I'm happy to vote on this tonight if you guys want to make changes or come back with some clarity on what, like, I don't think a patio should be included in as an accessory building. Everyone has a patio, but I, if my neighbor started building a pergola and a trellis and a gazebo and a greenhouse, I'd be like, hey, what the heck's going on back there? You know? So I think there probably should be some refinement to where, what we do with that accessory building. I think it's a great job. I'm for the change. I just think to McConnell's question, which really got me thinking about it, I think we need to be careful how we define the accessory building and then how many we're allowing, and then whether there's an exception.
Could we do something where, could you put language in that in the event that there's more than, if there's three or more, it has to receive staff approval? That's still a little bit squishy.
Yeah.
I think you guys should just go back and kind of work on it a little bit.
It sounds like just the definition between structure and building is what we need to define, and I'm all for it, buildings.
I may stop you for just a second. Jennifer, she's had her hand up, sorry. Alderman Altman Clof?
Not to like throw a wrench in all of this, but the other thing that I'm thinking is you guys are debating this, is I think of like my in-laws backyard. They, their house is on, they're on the Flowers neighborhood. Their backyard is tiny. So depending on how we reword this, two of any of this is probably too much and would look cluttered. But now you take my neighborhood or my block, and I don't have a huge lot, but I have a lot bigger lot than they have. So I could have a patio, a pergola, a little greenhouse, and a gazebo, and it wouldn't seem to be too much. So, I mean, not every lot size in the city is the same. And then again, I guess that kind of goes back to, you know, arguments that Alderman Rosak has made over the years, that are we really going to tell somebody what they can do on their private property? You know, homeowner's rights here. And again, if you don't want to live next to a house that has a greenhouse, a gazebo, and a carport, then go move into a neighborhood that has an HOA. So I think we might be getting into a little bit of weighty, you know, dicey, dicey area where I'm not comfortable getting too far into the weeds of telling my neighbor what they can and cannot do.
That's a good point. Good point. When I'm looking at my property, which is 40 acres, I have much more than two outbuildings.
Yeah.
It's a farm.
We're coming out there with a chainsaw.
I have to.
You gotta take, you gotta take it down.
So I think one more windstorm.
Where is your permit?
So you look at that, and I think Jennifer made a really good point of it being so many different lot sizes. So that, coming back to maybe making this first step the way it is, and see if something develops or it becomes an issue, and in the future, see if we have to adjust. Because I'm not sure you can write something to do all of these unique pieces of property. Alderman Mulder and Alderman McConnell, come back to you.
Yeah, I'm sharing the sentiment. I think four, five, and six, the patio, pergola, and trellis. My neighbor has a patio with a pergola over it and a trellis attached, like they would be. And all three of those don't really, they feel more like landscaping features than building, accessory buildings. Especially patio, it isn't, it doesn't have any walls. It feels odd to call that a building. So I guess I'm in agreement. I think those last three just aren't miscategorized as buildings, which if we didn't have those three in there, then the two might make more sense.
And they don't require a permit, so kind of like why are they, sorry, I didn't raise my hand. I'm pulling a Russell.
Alderman McConnell.
Wow. Wow.
Russi? Oh, okay, no problem. I'm sorry to cut you off before, but we had other people in line. Alderman Ellis.
So I just want to make sure, first off, I think you did an outstanding job, and sometimes people start looking at the weed saying, well, is that a big weed or a small weed? And what's the difference? Just, yeah, anyway. Those homes that are out there now that have these, this is for new structures, am I correct? Yes, no, maybe?
Yes, we're not going to go and start looking at things that are existing that don't have a permit and say that needs a permit. You know, those are called, they're grandfathered in without a permit.
Grandfathered, that's the word. Okay, good.
So, right, this is for someone that is new to the city that says, oh, I would like to put up a gazebo, do I need a permit?
Right.
And now we have it in black and white, yes, a gazebo requires a permit.
And we've got a definition for it now, so it's not a question. Right. So I'm definitely in favor of it.
I like the direction that this has gone back and forth, and I'm actually coming back to saying, let's start with this, let's move forward and see if it becomes an issue down And I'm actually coming back to saying, let's start with this, let's move forward and see if it becomes an issue down the road. Because you're trying to initially just give people direction.
Yeah.
And the question is whether council wants to say, hey, can we fine tune it and tighten it up a little bit? I can see pros and cons to that, but initially I thought it was a great idea, now I'm kind of looking back and forth at it. So Alderman Youngworth.
I, so I get on one hand, I really do, you've got a neighbor, right, that's got some things and they're going crazy, like, I get that, and by the way, thank you, this is, nothing I say is anything, thank you. I fundamentally have a problem with telling people, like, this is really, nitpicky might not be the right word, but this is getting real granular, and I just fundamentally, I do have an issue with this. So I'm probably not going to support this at least tonight, but yeah, that's just where my head's at right now. So wanted to get that out there.
Alderman Ellis?
I'd like to make a recommendation that we accept this and make this the first reading.
I have a question.
Is that, you're making that as a motion, is that correct?
I'm making that as a motion.
Can I sneak a question in before we make a motion?
Let me first see if we have a second, do we have a second?
Come on, guys, come on, come on.
Hearing no second, the motion fails. Alderman McConnell?
As a, so the permitting thing is interesting, as a part of the permitting process, do they go and take a look at the lot size and how the structure would fit into the lot size? So couldn't we technically solve the number of structures through the permitting process? Because they're not going to issue a permit if the structure doesn't fit within the lot safely, cohesively, correct?
Well, like Alderman Rozick said, there's setbacks for structures, and it would have to fit in that buildable envelope area.
Is there, are there more, are there more criteria that go into the specific, like, safety? I would assume there has to be access to whatever structure, so we could theoretically take care of the number problem just by adding the list of items required for a permit? That's where I'm going, that's the question I'm trying to get to. Could we pass this by striking line F? Under?
Well, I think, I think what Alderman Ellis is trying to do is he's saying, let's move this forward, but let's not waive the second reading, and then maybe, I'm guessing, then have staff work on it, bring it back at the second reading with changes, and then see where it goes. But right now, that motion was made, there was no second, so that motion failed. Alderman Rozick?
Yeah, my, I didn't want to, my goal wasn't to necessarily, you know, stop this whole thing, but I think there's enough questions that need to be defined. Your biggest problem is what McConnell said, which is the 1710, 110 F, which restricts it to two. So I think what we have to go back is redraft section A and pull these out, or redefine a patio, pergola, trellis, for instance, as, I don't know, a landscaping structure or something different, some other term.
Use different terminology.
Yeah, and then come back to the accessory building. I'm not, I'm not as concerned about saying, hey, you can't have 15 of these things in your backyard. I do, I'm with Eric on some of that. But I can see in, there's areas of the city where, you know, you've got a car, you know, a carport and a gazebo and a greenhouse and a per, you know, it starts getting, you know, it destroys the value of the homes around it as well. So I think there's a, there is a weighing test there, but I think we have to take out four, five, and six, so that's got to be redrafted. And then potentially what you could do is you could say the number in subparagraph H, instead of saying it's, you could say it's two and a third could be granted if the lot size is adequate to accommodate it. There could be some additional language you could add in there that gives the planning department the ability to say, hey, in a small lot, this is just too busy, it's too packed in, right? And so you guys will have to work on that language, but her lot that, you know, she's got a tiny little trellis and a pergola and a gazebo, maybe it's adequate. There's enough setbacks for something, and that could be within your discretion. You know, you have lots like the mayor's lot, that's huge, he could have 15 gazebos back there and no one's going to notice, you know? So, or, yeah.
Alderman Ellis?
I don't think we should rewrite it tonight.
I think basically what we should do is we should go ahead.
Let them work on it.
Let them work on it, just make this the first reading, let them come back, let them give us all of that information, and then we make that final decision on what we need to do. We can spend the next 47 hours talking about, well, let's look at this paragraph and that word and this and the other thing, or we can just move on to whatever the next thing is.
Our city administrator wants to make a quick comment, then I'll come back, Mike?
Oh, no.
Thank you, sir, I appreciated that. I just wanted to point out that item F is part of the existing ordinance.
Right.
So it wasn't anything that they were making changes on, so that's why that's in there.
Yep.
They didn't have that in there to change it. But once we bring the ordinance, it's fair game to review and look and make the comments that you did. So that's all I was going to point out.
Alderman Spiegelberg?
I think staff has direction now, I think they, they know what to do with this. I'm not opposed to this ordinance or even eliminate it to two if it's the building structures and not the other like landscaping things that we talked about. I think it provides order in our communities, and that's part of, you know, what we're all here for, and so is Jason, so. And thank you so much for your wonderful presentation, you did a great job.
Great. Alderman Mulder?
My only comment was that if we approve the first reading, then that doesn't accomplish anything, because then next time we'd have to come back and make changes to the, in the second reading. So we don't want to approve anything, because we need to have the amendment, we need to have the amendments to this to get what we want. If we approve it as is right now, we're saying we like it, and then we'll be making it. So they can come back with a new one, and we can approve it in the language we like at that point.
Alderman Ellis?
So understanding what we just talked about and communicating everybody to staff, by us approving it the way it is, they know exactly what it's going to take for it to get its final approval. Okay, so it's not like if we approve it today, oh, they'll just blow it through the next time. No, because they understand now exactly what it's going to take. So I have to respectfully disagree with you with that.
So we've made, a motion was made to approve it, and that motion did not get a second, and there was no vote. So at this point, there is no moving forward on the current one unless another motion is going to be made. Alderman Spiegelberg?
I will make a motion to table this or to postpone this to a date certain.
So a motion has been to table, second. Please call roll, there's no discussion on the table.
Alderman Youngworth.
Aye.
Alderman Rozick.
Aye.
Alderman Altman Kloth.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Nay.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder. Alderman Shellpepper. Alderman McConnell.
Aye.
One thing I really liked was, I think it's Alderman Rozick said that using landscaping, maybe using some of that terminology might help clarify it even a bit more, so that just as a comment. Is there anything that you're seeing council on the pools and spas?
Your way of saying you don't want another 47-minute conversation?
I don't want to go, I don't want to spend, spend another half an hour unless it's going to be protected.
No. I think we're good on that.
Okay, so I'd like to open up any questions or comments, because we've had a public, we've had a public meeting. Any questions or comments for Mr. Gallo on the next item, which is consider act on ordinance, remember this is the first reading? Consider act on ordinance 2501104 to amend 17.118 accessory uses in 17.9036 definitions relating to swimming pools, hot tubs, spas within the city ordinance. You have the option to waive the second reading if you so choose. Like to leave it open for discussion?
You sure?
I'd like to entertain a motion.
I just have one question.
Okay, go.
And I don't mean to be a stickler, Daisy, are you sure you want to do this for a living? Positive? No, this is, this is pretty simple. We have in-ground swimming pools requiring a permit, what about these above-ground pools? Is above-ground pools considered at all? Because right now, the way, what we're reading here for the change, above-ground pools are not included in this change. So are we, are we just saying above-ground pools are okay? Because we've got the spas, we've got the swimming things, and we've got the in-ground, but the above-ground pool is kind of, in some instances, a bigger deal. Because if you don't have an HOA, they don't restrict above-ground pools.
Define above-ground pool, like a little, you know, blue pool?
No, no, they've got, no, no, they've got that in here, so they have the seasonal pool is allowed because it comes down, but there's the permanent above-ground pools as a separate category of swimming pool.
Mr. Gallo?
That's a good point, we can add, in that, in that chart, we can amend that this evening and say, you know, in-ground or below-ground swimming pools require a building permit, because there are a lot of above-ground swimming pools that are up year-round.
Right.
And they winterize them, and then they're up for the next season.
So it's, it's just, the question revolves around just that one missing piece, the rest of it sounds good. I'm glad that we're looking at this. The above-ground pool, so you got your in-ground swimming pool needs a permit, that makes sense. You usually need a permit anyway, because you have to do excavation, plumbing, electrical. So you're going to have most of that hit anyway. It's the above grounds where, you know, people slop those in, and sometimes they're not to code, their electrical is bad, you know? I think we should add that or amend that to include in-ground and above-ground.
Permanent above-ground pools would be another layer on that chart that would say, you know, yes, permits required. Seasonal ones are ones that come down every year, those don't require a permit, but the permanent ones do, yes.
And you guys have, you have a seasonal play structure and seasonal swimming pool, which is item I and J. So I think you're covered there with the seasonal, it's the permanent above-ground, which I think you just add as a permit required pool.
Alderman Mulder?
So you, hot tubs and spas don't require a permit unless they're over 144 square feet. Would it be simpler to simply say any swimming pool, hot tub, or spa over 144 feet requires a permit? Anything under 144 square feet does not? Because a small, a small swimming pool, a swimming pool could be smaller than a spa. It feels a little subjective to say spas are somehow don't need it when a swimming pool would. Especially when you go and qualify it and say, well, if it's a big spa, we'll require you to permit it anyway.
My thought is, my.
People like the terms, so I think it's nice to have their terms in, that makes it simple and practical. But when you use those terms, at least that's a little easier for them to grasp.
Simply say any, any in-ground, above-ground, hot tub, or spa over 144 square feet requires a permit. Keep the definition so people know what it is.
Yep, yep, I could do that. Are you comfortable with that, Jason?
I've got one more. I know a lot of people, sorry, can't worms turn this one?
I feel like the chicken ordinance all over.
There's nobody here. Well, with the above-ground pools, especially the ones that are more permanent, I know a lot of people add patios and decking around them. I think the ordinance should include the structures that go around the above-ground pool as well, because I've seen those that are.
As part of the square footage?
Well, as part of the, as part of the permitting process.
Those require permits.
They do.
So you would have to have a permit for the deck, but not necessarily the pool?
Well, we're going to add that, we're going to add that section.
All right.
Yep.
Just making sure, I want all the language is there for that.
I'd like to entertain a motion. And any, any adjustment to that motion, please?
So I'll, I'll make a motion to amend this, as I've said before, that any in-ground or above-ground permanent swimming pool, hot tub, or spa over 144 square feet require a building permit. Those under 144 square feet do not require a permit, and I do not want to waive the second reading so we can read that language.
Second.
Good point, yep.
Any further questions or comments? Did you get the second?
What about the pools that come down every year?
They're in there.
That's already in there.
That's seasonal.
Well, I mean, if they're above 144 square feet, we're saying, nah, we're admitting saying, if you take your pool down every year, each year, you have to go pull a permit.
I said permanent, so I didn't, I left seasonal.
Oh, okay, so the seasonal is still, all right.
Correct. So we have a motion and a second for the first reading. Any further questions, comments? Call roll, please.
You know, I'm sorry, I do, because I, no, no, I literally have a question, so we're now voting on, on moving forward with the language, I'm sorry, I'm.
With my amended.
With your amended language, so making the, so what we're seeing here, but with your amended language, that's what we're.
And then we don't want to waive the second reading, his comment was, let's make sure we read it again on the second reading. So that we're happy, and you can still, you can still adjust the second reading if you want.
Okay.
Next meeting. Gotcha.
Do we have a motion, a second, do you have any other questions, Eric?
I'm good.
You're good, call roll, please.
Alderman, Alderman Youngworth.
Nay.
Alderman Rozick.
Aye.
Alderman Altman Kloth.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Nay.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman McConnell.
Aye.
Great job on all the work, little bit more, and we'll get this closed, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And a new business, consider act on developers' agreement for Pabst Farms Boulevard improvements.
Thank you, sir. We actually have three developers' agreements on the agenda tonight. We'll go through them separately as they each do something a little bit different. They're all associated with Pabst Farms and the Costco warehouse development that is being proposed in that area. Item A is the developers' agreement for the improvements to Pabst Farms Boulevard. This is an agreement that is signed by both Costco and Pabst Farms. A TIA, a TIA was completed for the traffic associated with this, and certain improvements were defined in that, and this agreement says that they were going to build those at their expense in order to provide the access to Costco. So that's what the first agreement is for.
Questions or comments for Mr. Fry?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any further questions or comments? Alderman Spiegelberg?
I will be voting aye on this and also B and C, and the reason is, now that the council, the majority, have catapulted Costco forward, and I'm sure they're going to be a great neighbor and be a great financial benefit to our community, but now that the majority have wanted to push this forward, we want to make sure it's done right, and a lot of these aspects are, you know, getting into the weeds and the details on making sure that things are done right now going forward.
Any other further comments or questions? Call roll, please.
Alderman Youngworth.
Aye.
Alderman Rozick.
Aye.
Alderman Altman Kloth.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman McConnell.
Aye.
Next one up is consider act on the developers' agreement for Costco Wholesale. Mr. Fry?
Thank you. This item has basically our standard developers' agreement, you see it with any other project that goes on in the city. It covers the grading work, any erosion control, stormwater, any improvements that they have to make. Because this site's going to be served mostly by public utilities, there's only small areas of public infrastructure that'll be going in. But once again, it's our standard agreement for development, and it covers all the aspects of it.
Questions or comments for Mr. Fry? We also have the applicant here, both Pabst Farms and Costco are here in the audience. If you have any questions, we can bring them up. Like to entertain a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any further questions or comments? Call roll, please.
Alderman Youngworth.
Aye.
Alderman Rozick.
Aye.
Alderman Altman Kloth.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman McConnell.
Aye.
On to our next item, consider act on the private access easement and the maintenance agreement to Costco.
So the unique thing about this agreement, it's the second one that we've done in the city now. The first one was with Wingspan. As staff, we've noted that there's areas where there's private drives that serve areas that the public drives through, that if they're not maintained, we don't really have any authority to go in because they're private. This agreement allows us that if they're not doing the maintenance on it, that we can have that work done and charge it back to them.
Questions or comments?
And it's also the easement for the public to be able to use the private roads.
Questions or comments?
That's a great catch.
Like to entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Further comments? Call roll, please.
Alderman Youngworth.
Aye.
Alderman Rozick.
Aye.
Alderman Altman Kloth.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman McConnell.
Aye.
Next type is, next up is consider act on the approval of the 2026-2030 capital plan. We've worked on that, Steve, if there's any questions or comments from the council? If not, we'll move right into a motion.
So the one change that was made, so obviously we came and went through all the items, the committee, the whole recommended. The one change was the wording for playground equipment from Hawthorne and the other parks, so now it just says playground equipment.
Okay.
So with that being the only change that we went through in our last workshop, do we have any questions or comments from council?
My only, my only question on the Hawthorne Park is if we don't, it's still 90 grand. If it doesn't get moved by the Park and Rec Board, or if it's, well, I guess, the Park and Rec Board already approved to move it, we're budgeting for that. If the Park and Rec Board makes a different decision to allow Hawthorne Park to stay and put equipment back in, what are we looking at for cost for that park equipment? Do we have any idea, Eric?
I can tell you.
Eric, do you have a?
I mean, it'll be less than the 90K, right?
Yes.
Yeah, it would probably be most likely less than the 90K, we're probably talking more 45, 50, kind of like what we did for Westover.
Yeah, I'd like to see the cost to be close to Westover, not exceeding Westover, I think that's a good. I mean, if we don't move, if the Park and Rec Board doesn't move it and puts the equipment back in, I guess we have an extra 45 grand maybe in our capital budget left over.
Yeah, you can either choose to use or not use it moving forward.
Okay, all right, good, thank you.
Any other, Alderman Spiegelberg?
I think our decision at Park and Rec will be coming in October, and before then, we're going to be going out and visiting both sites and making a determination on this, so.
Okay.
Thanks, Eric.
The Park and Rec Board already voted to remove.
I think our decision at Park and Rec will be coming in October, and before then, we're going to be going out and visiting both sites and making a determination on this, so.
Okay.
Thanks, Eric.
The Park and Rec Board already voted to remove Hawthorne Park, right?
They did already vote for that.
Correct.
So now they're going to go back to vote to maybe keep it.
Correct.
But, but the 90 is for if it moves to the other site.
Yes.
So if we, if we keep it in Hawthorne Ridge, we potentially save money.
Absolutely.
All right, I understand.
Like to entertain a motion?
Is that a recommendation that the Park and Rec is making? I mean, how can the Park and Rec just decide on their own if they're closing parks?
They would literally change a vote based on a couple people that have complained.
Well, it's been more than a couple. It's been a couple.
I thought that's a council call at the end of the day if we're closing a park or relocating.
Let's, let's stay focused, not on the park, let's just take, stay focused on the budget.
I just, I didn't realize that was the plan when we talked about it at the capital budget workshop, because it, I know it was a recommendation was going to be made, but not a final decision.
Go ahead, Mark.
So the item, we did discuss this at, at the workshop, at that time, I noted that I didn't think it was appropriate for the council to have to make a decision on a park through the budget process, that if there's going to be questions, because there was questions back and forth, does it stay, does it go? And I felt it's more appropriate for that to go back to Park and Rec and let them make a decision on where a park should be. The council can vote on the capital improvements of the playground equipment, but if, if the council wants to take on that, that discussion and that, and make that determination as a council, on the council floor, we can bring it forward as an item.
I can always bring it back.
So, so that's just going to be, their recommendation will be final then, that's what the plan is currently, for the Park and Rec to make the final recommendation?
Correct.
Okay.
Because we didn't make a decision, we didn't, this council didn't make a decision to remove Hawthorne Park, the Park and Rec Board did.
Correct.
That was never made by this council, they made that decision, now they're going back on the decision, I just, we've never touched it.
Right.
And all we're saying is that, that there's a 90,000 in there to, for them to do, I guess.
They want to do with it.
But we're still in control of the purse strings, no matter what happens.
Sure, right.
And that's the key part, and I think, Eric, that if it does stay there, we really, really want to keep that cost down, because it sounds like we could save money if that's what the park board decides to do. So I think that's a good approach, if that's a decision by the board.
But, but it really is, it's not really moving, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to jump in, it's really not moving, it, the park stays there, it's just whether or not we're going to put equipment there.
Correct.
Correct.
Or we put equipment in some other land owned by the city, and the park board made that decision, now they're going back and revisiting that decision, so we're just kind of stuck in the middle, because it's during budgeting cycle, and there hasn't been a decision made by that park board yet.
Alderman Ellis?
Yeah, but we are not putting the equipment in there, it's the board, it's the park board that's doing it, we're just the purse strings.
We're allocating.
We're the, we're allocating funds.
So what are we voting on here? We're just voting on the...
We are voting on the capital budget for 2026.
Right.
In there is $90,000 is allocated for playground equipment.
Period.
Period. It may go to another location, we don't know, at this stage.
Let's just hope the park board does not decide to keep it there and then spend 90,000 on equipment, though. So that's where I want to be clear.
Yes, yes.
If, if Hawthorne Park stays there and they put the equipment in, and they spend 90,000 in equipment, that's going to be a major problem, I'm going to move to amend this capital budget and put it back to the, the Westover price, whatever that is, 40